For record purposes, state your name and city of residence. Please make your comments directly to the Planning Commission Board.
2021, even though our parcel is listed in the notice of preparation document along with many others of our neighbors. We opposed a similar project that was proposed by a groupie developer in the same location back in roughly 2008, and we opposed this plan as well. As you are aware, Riverbank's sphere of influence was increased by 1,500 acres, which is large, just six years ago, back in 2016. The first 400 acres of which is just now beginning to develop in the Crossroads West project. Given that, a request to add another 1,500 acres to Riverbank's sphere of influence seems premature at this time, if warranted at all. When this project comes before you, I urge you to deny this project without moving it forward to LAFCO. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Barney Agers. It's spelled the same way as my wife's name, A-G-G-E-R-S. I lived at 7730 McHenry Avenue for the past 35 years. We farm almonds, as most of my neighbors do. Again, I oppose this project. It would take Ag land, which is in its best use currently, and put in up to 3,500 homes. This is, the impacts are immense. If you study the project, to push Coffee Road all the way through this acreage and exit it out onto McHenry, just south of the river. There's already a traffic jam every day, almost clear back to Escalon. The impacts, whether it's sewage tapping into the aquifer to the tune of 2 million gallons per, I don't know if that's a day or every other day. Anyway, the impacts are immense. The sewage situation, traffic. Overall, I'll sum it up in two words. To put, to vote for Riverwalk would be an environmental injustice to the whole area, Del Rio, Riverbank, Modesto. It's, it's a terrible idea. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm Donna and other Planning Commission members. My name is Karen Kinrato. I live on Hoag Road on Modesto, that borders the area that's being discussed. I'm here tonight to clearly state my opposition to the proposed Riverwalk. How do you develop? As you are aware, over 2,400 homes will be built on almost 1,000 acres of designated prime agricultural, highly productive land. This fertile farmland is a flood plain, and as you know, this land has a history of being flooded. Thus, at some point in time, lives and homes will be at risk. The plant, as of Planning Commission, you are important because you advise the Riverbank, City Council on matters of land use and general plan. The Commission makes recommendations for the approval or not of planning projects and on policy. The benefits of this project, I feel, have been exaggerated, and the many disadvantages have been glossed over and are diminished. Riverbank's previous plan to develop this fertile land was abandoned, as it should have been. As Jamie Agers stated earlier, we were not notified of this plan. And as far as we know, no one surrounding this area was. So I would like to make a request in the future that we are given notification as property owners immediately when, when something occurs. For example, to draft the IR, that we're not left in the dark and stumble on it accidentally. I ask you to look at the big picture to remember. You have already approved building on less fertile soils. Please look at the big picture with this project entails, the disadvantages the City of Riverbank will become embroiled in and responsible for, and to know the obstacles before you commit to this project. Tell the owners and development this project will not fly before they spend more time and money trying to push it through. Please advise your City Council to vote no on this project when it comes before you and before them. And I do want to say, we have concerns with traffic that are already, not only, as Barney said, to Escalon, backed up till Escalon, but all the way to Patterson and Lad Road. And that's before construction, sorry, there's construction now, which of course increases that, but that was before construction started. We have concerns with the sewage, with the aquifer, with the river habitat and the wildlife. So please consider this project carefully and objectively. Thank you.
My name is Libby Longstress. I live on Christmas Tree Lane in an incorporated part of Riverbank. I just want to, I've lived here most of my life, gone a little while, came back. But anyway, this change, the Riverwalk project proposes a truly catastrophic change and the whole character of Riverbank and McHenry. And I mean, you're talking enormous pressure on an area that is not designed and never was designed. It was never thought that that would ever be developed. The, it has flooded, in my memory, at least three times, and it seems unconscionable to say, oh, well, we have that under control. It won't happen again. Well, of course, it is going to happen again. That is the nature, that's kind of what, almost what the purpose of that plan is, is to, so that we don't flood the rest of Modesto and the rest of Riverbank. It all goes there, which is a very safe place. It's just the idea that some person would buy or build a home there and then find out later that, oh, this is going to flood all the time. It just, it, it could just be a terrible white elephant for Riverbank to have to deal with. My primary concerns are emotional, just the drastic, drastic change in character of Riverbank and that would ensue. Just seems like you're taking a nice place to live and making it pretty, pretty awful.
Anyone else wish to speak? Thank you. We'll move along to the consent count.
There are no emails that came in.
Oh, okay. Are there any emails that are coming?
Yes.
Oh, there were none. Yeah, the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are to be acted upon by a single action of the Planning Commission Board, unless otherwise requested by an individual Planning Commission member or member of the public for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by motion of the Planning Commission Board. Item 2.1 is posting of the agenda. And item 2.2, approval of the March 15, 2022 agenda. And we ask for approval by a roll call vote.
Okay. Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Vice Chair Link?
Yes.
Commissioner Dinan?
Yes.
And Commissioner Rubin?
That was a yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Item 3, Planning Commission Procedures. Item 3.1, the annual nomination and appointment of the Chair and Vice Chair for the Planning Commission Rules and Procedures. After nomination?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Dinan. I nominate Steve Link to be Chair and Natasha Baslow to be Vice Chair for the coming period.
I'll second it.
Let me get my notes down. So, okay, Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Vice Chair Link?
Yes.
Commissioner Dinan?
Yes.
And Commissioner Rubin?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Right, so that is the completion of the Planning Commission Procedures. Item 3.1, moving on to item 4, which is the Planning Commission presentation that requires no action on our part. Item 4.1, the Presentation on Environmental Justice Program. It is the Planning Commission to receive a report from Zoe Johnick of Civic Spark on the environmental justice element as part of the general plan update process.
She'll be joining us on Zoom, so take just a moment. Zoe? Johnick?
Hello. Can everyone see and hear me all right?
Yes.
Great. I'm going to share my screen. Just give me a moment. All right, can everyone see that?
Yes.
Yes.
Awesome. Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me here today on this call. My name is Zoe Johnick. I'm a Civic Spark Fellow, working with the City of Riverbank's Planning Department, Donna and Gabrielle. And I'm here today to talk to you about environmental justice and Riverbank. So last year, my site supervisor, Katie Moose, from California Health Collaborative, gave the City Council a presentation on the benefits of smoke and tobacco-free Maltina housing. During that presentation, council members commented that smoke-free housing would fit better in an environmental justice element in the general plan, rather than the housing element. So after that presentation, Katie followed up with the planning staff to see how California Health Collaborative could help Riverbank develop an environmental justice element, which resulted in a three-way partnership between City Planning Staff, CHC, and the Civic Spark Program, of which I'm a fellow. I'm here today to give you all a primer on the environmental justice element and what it means for Riverbank. And if I may, I may come back towards the end of my service term in August and provide reports on the findings of my project here. So first, I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Zoe Johnick. As I said, I'm a native of Oakland, California, and a recent graduate of Wellesley College, where I studied political science and Spanish. I am passionate about working to stop the climate crisis, especially through grassroots organizing. Now, Civic Spark is an American Core program, specific to California, that pairs fellows with local governments and nonprofits. We serve year-long terms in which we complete a project that fills some gaps in the jurisdiction's capacity to address climate change. My project is to do community engagement around an environmental justice element for the city's general plan. These may be unfamiliar terms, so for the next couple of sections, I'll be defining what these mean. So first up are general plans. I'm sure most of you here are aware what these are, but for anyone watching who is not, general plans are long-term roadmaps for a city, usually spanning about 20 years. They outline a collective vision for the city and establish priorities and policies for how to achieve this vision over the course of the next two decades. General plans guide decision-making in the city, especially when it comes to land use, development, and planning. There are eight elements or chapters required for general plans in California, seen here. Circulation, housing, land use, noise, open space, conservation, safety, and the newest one, environmental justice, which I will get into shortly. As for Riverbank, currently operating under the 2005 to 2025 general plan, and the city is gearing up for the next update, which takes a number of years to develop and approve. Right now, my project is doing some of the groundwork and initial community engagement to inform the next update of the general plan, so as to comply with Senate Bill 1,000. So what is Senate Bill 1,000? Senate Bill 1,000, also called SB 1,000, or the Planning for Healthy Communities Act, was passed in 2016 and requires that all jurisdictions, such as cities, towns, counties, et cetera, include an environmental justice element in their next update of their general plan if they include at least one disadvantaged or environmental justice community. I'll talk a bit about what that definition is in a minute. This bill requires that said EJ element must reduce the unique and compounded health risks in disadvantaged communities through the following requirements. So these are the requirements under SB 1,000. The first is to identify and address the needs of disadvantaged communities, which is a bit all-encompassing for the rest of the requirements. The needs of disadvantaged communities must be identified and prioritized through these next requirements, reducing pollution exposure, improving air quality, promoting equitable access to public facilities, promoting civic and community engagement, promoting access to healthy food choices, promoting safe and sanitary housing, and promoting physical activity. Now, you may be wondering how all of these things fall under the umbrella of environmental justice, or even what environmental justice means. So to answer this, it will probably be easier to start with why we need environmental justice. So we call it environmental injustice when certain communities, areas, or groups are faced with greater environmental risks or burdens in other areas. These areas can be described as disadvantaged communities or environmental justice communities. Some examples are how black and brown communities are more likely to have oil refineries in their backyards and have disproportionately more tobacco retailers and marketing in their neighborhoods. Some of the water issues we have in California, such as drought and groundwater contamination, impact immigrant communities and low-income communities in agricultural regions far more than well-off white communities. A number of factors tend to stack to make these risks worse. So histories of lending, housing discrimination can stack on top of zoning decisions that prioritize businesses over the people living there, which can stack on top of barriers to stopping the placement of toxic facilities, all resulting in a neighborhood that can be stuck with a pollutant, putting their health at higher risk than other neighborhoods. Members of these communities, which are often black or brown, especially across California, face higher rates of illness and illness-related death, including those seen here, along with increased vulnerability and persistent barriers to achieving health and safety. A great tool to visualize what this really looks like in California and in our area is Calen Virus Screen, which I invite you all to visit and explore for yourselves if you have not already. It is a really useful tool. It was developed to show the varying levels of pollution in different areas and cross that information with population characteristics of the area. The overall Calen Virus Green score for a certain place is calculated through two scores. So the pollution burden, which measures potential exposure to pollutants and the negative conditions of pollution, and population characteristics, which measures rates of environment-related health issues, such as asthma hospitalizations, and as well as demographic stats like poverty and linguistic isolation. So these scores are in percentiles, where the higher the number, the worse the pollution impacts. Unlike in school, when you would want to be in a high percentile, that meant you did very well. In this case, a high percentile means that worse environmental conditions. Here, you can see the Calen Virus Green for Riverbank. So these scores are mapped using census tracts, so they are not going to be accurate down to the neighborhood, but it's a small scale that they have available for this tool. You can refer to this legend here on the left to see that the darker the color, the more orange, the higher the percentile score, which in this case, as I said, is negative. To zoom out and get some perspective, this is what California as a whole looks like. So as you can see, there's a lot of green around these other areas, but the Central Valley has a lot of orange, reds, and yellows. Going back to Riverbank, you can see here, according to SB 535, any tract that's in the top 25% of Calen Virusy scores is considered a disadvantaged community. This isn't the only way to define a disadvantaged community, and it doesn't work for every city, but as a general score, it can show you where some of the worst environmental conditions are concentrated. So you can see that here. According to this metric, Riverbank has three disadvantaged communities. So this brings us all the way back to environmental justice, because environmental justice is all about addressing the ways environmental risks impact some communities more than others. So this definition, as you see here, is used by many environmental justice advocates, which is the right, basic right of people to live, work, go to school, play, and pray in a healthy and clean environment. But in local government, there's a little bit more to it than that. EJ also means that everyone sees the same degree of protection from environmental and health hazards, and crucially, it means that everyone has equal access to the decision-making process in order to create a healthy environment. These two aspects together mean that from development to implementation to enforcement, policies that impact our local environment need to address existing inequities and protect everyone equally. So the process of opening up decision-making to involve everyone can be referred to as community engagement. Sorry about that. It can and should take many forms. Door-to-door conversations, town hall meetings, surveys, focus groups, workshops, et cetera, but the intent is the same, to give a voice and civic power to members of the community. The justice part of environmental justice means that this power is extended to those who may not otherwise have been able to be involved. So it's important to note that good community engagement is not just informing people about what's going on or asking their input on decisions that have already been made, but working with them to guide the process in the first place and giving people a say in the decisions. SB 1,000 requires a robust community engagement process to inform the environmental justice element. Next-door neighbor Modesto actually got called out by former Attorney General of California Javier Becerra because their draft environmental justice element did not show that they did significant community engagement in identifying the needs of their disadvantaged communities. And so now they're doing a full force for their second try. They're doing a full-force community engagement project. So where my project comes in is I am conducting initial community engagement and laying the groundwork for the full environmental justice element development process. I have, I'm having conversations with community members to gather information about what Riverbank residents want to see happen and how to get involved. I will be developing reports with my findings and recommendations for the environmental justice process. I will also be working to create an EJ advisory board that can help steer the process once my service term is up. Also be, like I said, interviews, research, and surveys. There's a survey that will be, I will be dispersing shortly that will allow people to share their thoughts and feelings quickly with this process, for this process. So I've really enjoyed working on this project, and I'm really excited to see where it goes and the impact it can have. By promoting meaningful community engagement through this process, we can really increase civic engagement and civic participation in the years to come as well. General plans are all about building a future we'd want to see together, and the development of this particular element provides a unique opportunity to take initiative in making Riverbank a healthier, safer, and greener place for everyone. So I'll wrap up here. I just wanted to point out to those of you interested in learning more about anything I discussed today to check out the California Environmental Justice Alliance's SB 1,000 Implementation Toolkit. It is specifically geared for planning departments in cities, but the language is accessible enough that not just government types can read it and understand it. They really break down every, every term, every issue, and explain step by step the best practices for this process. It goes into depth in all the topics I mentioned and some I didn't get into. So as one of the next steps, you can read more from the toolkit. There's also fact sheets that summarize the chapters that you can check out online. You can just Google this toolkit. There's all, I'd also invite you all to talk with people you know about environmental justice. Start having these conversations, start thinking about what you would like to see happen in your community. Finally, I would love to have a conversation with anyone who wants to talk to me about this project or environmental justice. My contact information is here below for easy ways to reach me. You can email, text, or call. Thank you so much for having me here. I really enjoyed giving this presentation to you all, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Zoe. Are there any questions for Zoe?
No.
Could you explain in a little more detail how you determine where these disadvantaged communities are in Riverbank?
Yeah, sure. So there is a couple of different ways. One way, and this, it also gets into this in the toolkit, but one of the ways, which is a little bit simpler, is looking at that map that I showed you. The map was created for SB 535, which is about distributing funds from a carbon tax, a like greenhouse gas tax. But they created this tool to see where the intersections lie for environmental conditions and population conditions. And like I said, that can be about the, you know, rates, low birth weight or asthma hospitalizations, things like that. And in a small city like Riverbank, there will be, it might not be the most accurate down to the neighborhood, like I said, just because of the scale. But there are other ways you can do that, which involve isolating certain factors that are more important or more prevalent. And for example, if there's no, you know, toxic pollutant in the city, then that might not be a factor that you want to factor into the score. There's other things you can do. There's a process called Groundtree thing, where you can go and basically send people through the community, walk the community, and mark certain environmental impact things. And you can use that to compare to the map. And there's, there's a slew of different techniques you can use, but the most useful are isolating certain characteristics or factors that you want to weight more heavily due to the characteristics and specifics of the town.
Who is doing this? Who is doing this evaluation?
So part of my process is, so in the requirement- the, so in the requirements of SB one thousand, you have the identifying and addressing the needs of disadvantaged communities. So identifying is the first step in this process when it's done in earnest. So I'll be taking on some of that. And part of the information gathering, both from people and from research, is going to be comparing any information I find to the information on that map to determine what we would call a disadvantaged community in Riverbank.
The end of item four point one. Moving on to item four point two, the presentation of the annual general plan and housing government report. All of the data the state receives from us regarding all progress regarding new housing permits, housing subdivisions approved, all that data is used by the state to acknowledge and recognize that the city is making progress towards their housing goals. These are typically allocated to the regional housing allocation, which I believe Sancog, Sanzos County groups with the various cities in the county. And from there, they determine what are the appropriate numbers for the city Riverbank. And in terms of the data that's used, you know, like I said, it's used for, for grant funding and programs. We were able to obtain a grant, SB two grant, of a hundred fifty thousand dollars in twenty twenty. And we've worked with JB Anderson, who was here to provide a presentation later on today, to assist in the development of the accessory dwelling unit section in the municipal code. With that help, we were able to modify and create and establish a new ADU section in the zoning ordinance, in which we'll receive a presentation later on. And basically, we made some progress in twenty twenty when we received that award. We've continued to make progress and, and actually, the ordinance, I believe, was adopted in December of twenty twenty-one. And then with the information spread to the state, we're also able to apply and receive another LEAP grant also in twenty twenty. And this was used with the assistance of Norma in administration and Donna under leadership. And Maricela, we were able to win an award of a hundred fifty thousand dollars for a permit processing software system. And we're working to transition the existing system to an iCloud cloud-based system, which will allow applicants and developers to apply online if they want to apply electronically, kind of work to make it streamlined and make things a little more efficient and effective as of working with the development community and residents. So working to transition that, hopefully later on this spring. So we're working with that software company I work currently. And another grant that we were able to win as part of us applying and being able to make sure that we provided the correct information to the state was the REAP grant. In this case, we were selected as the REAP grant recipient in the amount of eighteen thousand two hundred thirty-two dollars, which is used to fund the Sparks Fellow, Zoe, who you heard from earlier tonight, to initiate environmental justice outreach, which will be used for the general plan update in a couple of years. But a lot of that research analysis that she's helping out with, that engagement piece, is a critical component moving forward.
What does REAP and REAP stand for?
Good question. Let me see if it's in the staff report. I'll have to come back to you on that one, John. Sorry about that. Got the next slide done. So this is some of the progress made from the highlights on the regional housing needs allocation. We, the city is, from twenty fifteen until now, we've reached ten percent of the very low-income goal. Reached, achieved eighty percent of the low-income goal, zero percent of the moderate-income goal. The crux, where most of our development has occurred, in the above-market rate, moderate-income housing production, which is thirty-six of the housing production that's been in the, in the city over the last few years. Actually, in twenty twenty-one, we processed and approved forty-seven building permits. Most of these twenty-two were for Countryside One, which has continued with that development. Also Crossroads West Unit One, which was a newer development in the Crossroads West area, which is called Parkway to Space. And I believe sixteen, sixteen units were developed. As part of that process, we also had one infill duplex, which was of two units and, and also another accessory dwelling unit. Basically, all these different types of housing are included and provided to the state in the building permit numbers. And some of the, from some additional progress report highlights, some of the areas that we have achieved in advance on these initiatives are on the general plan program land five, which is zoning amendments, accessory dwelling unit ordinance. Also, the program circulation one element bicycle and pedestrian natural climb. There was a bicycle and pedestrian natural climb.
Alright, so the next part of the zoning ordinance is to add sections in the program municipal code for up to stage of application for development, requiring supporting information for certain applications, which I'll get into a little later in the presentation. And also the actual review procedure that SAT uses as kind of a toolkit for many applications. And there is a general processing procedure, including applications under requirements, as well as no to requirements for certain applications. And like I was just saying a little bit before, the city already has an administrative procedures process for some applications and not all. And the purpose of this code update is to include one of the architectural site and review procedures for certain development applications, as well as reorganizing existing administrative procedures that will be easier to read and use. I'll go into summary of the code amendment, and if there's any questions, please don't hesitate to ask. So the first set is the purpose for the general and application. These sections provide the purpose of the administrative procedures title, as well as the requirement for applications to follow the city for any development permits. So the city already has existing permits or existing applications that they use that codifies that to make sure that anyone who has been proposed to develop the site is required to submit applications to that development. The section for supporting information, every application that the city receives for development always has some supporting information that shows where the site is located, a legal script, preliminary cap report, as well as project plans that show the proposed development, like a site plan, floor plan, elevation, of that nature. So the purpose of this section is to ensure that if something is required, the support is for development applications. The review procedure, and the way this is set up, it's quite general, which is certain review procedures are typically by state law, like a public hearing notice and the thirty-day review of an application that's all kind of basic to state law. But this would really just allow kind of a step-by-step process that SAT would use to review and present entitlement applications to planning commission and city council. The section is the public hearing notice section that any type of development application like traditional use permit or architectural site review will require a public hearing notice. And next, maybe about having its own sections that each subsequent section regarding traditional use permit and architectural site review appeals, we can reference back to this to make sure that it's very clear on which application requires a public hearing notice and which do not. For example, use permit require a public hearing notice to publish a newspaper, as well as entry progress in three hundred feet of the project before it goes to planning commission, that can be noted. Now, the city already had a use permit section. One of the things that we did is to really just represent it. A lot of the language stayed the same, but we formatted it in a way that, that was clear on the applications required and the format the city described the themes required, as well as the public hearing notice is required. And then also the findings are, are numbered. So it's very easy for SAT to take those findings and then demonstrate that the project you presented does not make new findings that impact you for your review action. So the findings are related to making sure that projects are consistent with the plan and planning, as well as the use is not detrimental to public health, taking well for the people residing and working in the name of the project is located on. Now, for architectural site planner views, the existing code does not have an architectural site planner view chapter. It's not the end of the world, certainly, that government has processed architectural site planner views without it. There's a process laid out, like I was saying before, in state law for it. But what's nice about having an architectural site planner section by itself is that we can tailor findings to that type of application. And in comparison to that use permit, where it's all about the use and making sure that the use is tailored, so it's not detrimental to the public health, taking well for, okay? Architecture site planner views are related to architecture, site planning, making sure there's an upholstery parking, making sure that traffic's not getting issued. It's not really the use that's the issue, it's the site planning and how it develops on the site. So that's how the findings are related to architecture site planner view. Again, SAT will use those as part of their recommendation to planning commission for your review and action. The variance section, most of the only to say the same, which is kind of reorganized, so it's a little bit easier to understand. And variance application is a special request to waive or alter one or more specific development standards. As an example, a site that is of a very unusual shape, that can be a certain setback, like a rear side yard, where everyone else in the area has a technical problem, that may constitute a variance request. And there's certain findings to make sure that we're not saying a special request or making a, maybe it's a special circumstance that we're doing, we're very careful planners to make sure that variance can make certain findings, not anything that's going to be something very narrow in approach. The last section is the question for the, what we're discussing, a second one that was very clear on whether or not so much incident found with electric decisions is made. What we did was reorganized it with a couple of tables to really clearly show who's the decision maker, planning commission, council, or the city's development director, on certain applications. And also shows who the, you know, like the planning commission, the city's building council, community director, which is the planning commission, and so forth. So it's a little bit easier to understand in the district code. So those, the ones we're implementing for this amendment, we're asking planning commission to recommend intention of construction, to comply with only development projects to have a foreseeable physical change in environment. This is revamping of the administrative procedures that have anything to do with a development project call. And our recommendation tonight is to conduct a public hearing and approve resolutions, recommend approval of the ordinance amendment in the municipal code, which includes sections one five thirty-two, five thirty-one. This is to substitute them with new sections, adding new sections two one zero to two one four. And I also would like to talk just a quick minute about our next steps as part of this project. Project is funded through Centrep two, and we've already completed the administrative accessory dwelling ordinance amendment. We're working on design guidelines as well, consistent with the ADU building plans that we've seen a couple of times now. As part of this particular project for administrative procedures, we're also looking at creating a pre-allocation process, not necessarily within the code, but something that developers can use to, you know, prioritize submitting a form application, making some information from the city related to development standards, application process, and essential conditions of approval. And then we're also looking at updating the form application form just to revamp it. And then as well as updating the planning of site to reorganize some of the left pages, which is a pretty couple of pages to kind of separate out like across the left from the general plan, you know, just kind of update a couple of areas there. The way it's described in the code, it can be used on the record throughout the process. So that's why we keep them there.
And David Benning, this is part of the SB two grant. And just so you know, it's basically been broken down into like three parts. The first part was an update to the ADU section to the current state law. The second ordinance is what he's working on now, the administrative procedures, which helps to streamline the home building process. And then finally, the third would be an ordinance that we're working on now to regulate and allow tiny home buildings. And so all these are covered underneath SB two grant, which was provided to us to streamline the housing review process. And as part of this ordinance that he's working on right now, that's before you, besides the website and some of the things that he mentioned, although obligated to update our handouts that we give to developers and to the community at the counter to make it easier for them to navigate the processes that we have.
Alright, so now it's ready to be, um, by the way, five point two, the new stuff. Item five point one is, is those ordinance amendments, is to update the administrative procedures that Donna had mentioned as it relates to processing by entitlement applications, such as conditional use of materials, et cetera. The first ordinance amendment will update according information required for applications submitted for review procedure for entitlement applications, public hearing notice procedures, add architectural site plan review, and some ordinance amendment procedures to the city zoning code. Projects that are determined under CQ, under the common sense exemption, and the applied projects only have potential for causing significant environmental effects. We are asking to approve this resolution. So we are, we are looking at for any final product. And then, big motion to approve the resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero zero one. The recommendation is to approve the ordinance to the city council. Have a motion.
Chair, Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
And Commissioner Vang?
Yes.
And Commissioner Ruben? Oh, I can hear my talk, so.
Yes, yes. But now up to item five point two, which is the pocket seat housing project general plan and reason.
Thank you, Commissioner. Unfortunately, with this project, we found public notice irregularity at the temple. Therefore, to ensure the project is in strict accordance with state public noticing laws, staff will renotice this item and place it on April nineteen, twenty twenty-two agenda. I mean, that includes due to the foot mailing as well. Thank you.
Onto item six, our planning commission comments.
I'm here. My question is why are there no two or three-story commercial buildings? Why is everything just a single story using all of this land in our shopping center?
Two reasons. One is that it's more expensive to build a second and third story on to building than it is to build a one-story structure. And then the second is why, I believe, the second story, the fire department wants to be trucked to the higher, to the fire mission. So there are no changes that increase the cost when you build higher. Number seven is to tell you what the division. And then onto number eight, if you have any more, stop comments if you have more.
I don't have any comment on a past meeting, but I'd like to say that the city had a centennial dinner last Saturday, two weeks ago, and well attended by a hundred and fifty people, and it was wonderful, a slap there. Really had a good time, and just would like to send the invitation to unity to join us for the next few events that will be scheduled throughout the year. Thank you.
Thank you, Doc. And then item number nine is our adjournment. Until our next regular planning session meeting, it's nineteen, twenty twenty-two at sixteen.